I'd like to call the city council meeting for, what's the date today? What, I gotta get to the-
Twenty fifth.
The twenty, for October twenty fifth, two thousand twenty-two, special meeting called by the mayor uh regarding the FY two thousand twenty-two tax classification hearing. Roll call, please.
President Laflamme.
Here.
Roy, Tillotson.
Here.
Zgarowski.
Here.
McCullough, Brooks.
Here.
Lopez, Valkir.
Here.
Krampitz.
Here.
Dobus, Shane, Bree.
Here.
Pinaya Costello, nine present.
Also, um, can you guys hear me here? Okay. Also on Zoom, um, is uh Consul Tillotson and Consul Brooks. Okay, um, and also tonight we have here for, to give us all the information regarding the tax classification, our assessor, Brian Soucy, uh Victor Anup, and Laura McCarthy. I'm gonna now turn it, uh, could we read the notification, please?
Pursuant to section thirteen of the Chigbee City Charter, I've called a special meeting of the city council to meet on Tuesday, October twenty-fifth, at five thirty PM in the Ch- Chigbee City Council chambers to discuss the following agenda. One, tax classification hearing. Two, set tax rate. Thank you for your time and consideration concerning this matter. Very truly yours, John View, Mayor.
Thank you, City Clerk. Um, also present is our attorney, Dan Garvey, and the mayor's chief of ch- staff, Michael Peace. Now I'll turn over to Laura McCarthy to uh go over all the information. You've got the floor, Laura.
Page in front of them. I'll start with the first page and briefly review all the information in there. Um, and then we'll go back to the process of what we need to do in terms of your votes. The first page is showing you some information about the total assessed taxable value in the city at the top. Our levy ceiling, our proposition two and a half limit, um, most importantly, the levy we're raising this year at ninety-six million one hundred twenty-eight thousand three, um, which is nine million nine hundred fourteen thousand zero zero one um lower than our proposition two and a half amount allowed, which was the one o- one hundred and six million figure above our levy. Second page is an introduction as to the classification process and the adoptions of different exemptions that are available for the city. It has an explanation of the terms that I used, levy, levy limit, levy ceiling, et cetera. Most of this was put into place from a nineteen seventy-four um Supreme Judicial Court decision and the two and a half referendum from nineteen seventy-eight. Page three is where we have the details about um our levy and the options available for you to establish a tax rate. I will come back to the details later. Page four is also the exemptions that you vote on. Page five shows you how the levy limit is calculated each year. It takes la- in the middle of the page. It takes last year's levy limit, adds in growth, and two and a half percent to come up with a new levy limit, which I said was approximately a hundred and six million dollars. We're well below our ceiling, which is a hundred and twenty-eight million dollars, and that's a good thing. People who are at the ceiling need to do a proposition two and a half override. Page six shows you the total valuation of all our classes of property. Class one residential includes single-family homes, condos, two-family homes. Then you have commercial and industrial and personal property that's taxed. I'll spend a little time on page seven, which is the new growth for, um, there's an error, fiscal year twenty-three. Top, we had twenty-three new houses this past year. We had a half-bath added to a condo, so we had new growth under condominiums, which is unusual. One new uh two-family house, five were renovated, new garage, and four new land parcels. Um, apartments with four or more units had some ma- two of them had major renovations, which was considered new growth. And River Mills Assisted Living has had a TIF, and their TIF went from eighty percent exempt to seventy percent exempt, giving us some new growth in that category. In commercial, the majority of the new growth was in two businesses, Florence Savings and Five Guys, and TIFs changing. One went from twenty percent exempt to ten, the other one was forty percent exempt to thirty percent. And um same thing with industrial properties. There was a change in one TIF, one TIF ended, and there were twenty-five new personal property accounts. Those are new businesses in the city that are taxable under the personal property. Um, page eight gives you an idea of what we've been doing over the past um years. Let's see, I don't know how many years we have here, at least fifteen years. We've been applying money towards the levy. That's the first column. This year it was three million dollars that you and the mayor applied towards the tax levy to reduce the tax levy. It shows what our levy amount is for the year and the increase from the prior fiscal year. Um, note that this year's increase is less than a million dollars from last year's levy. Um, and the only other time this has happened was when there was a reduction in fiscal year sixteen. There was a reduction in the levy, but in other years, usually there's a million-dollar difference or more in the levy amount from year to year. Next, we have um plus three uh for the addendums in the back. There was a detailed on one A, a detailed explanation of the minimum residential factor, the shift that it your, is allowed when you vote for the tax rate. I included that this year because we had a lot of new members of the city council. Um, following that is the mathematical formula for your information, which resulted in the city being allowed to have a residential factor using a hundred and seventy-five percent shift to commercial and industrial and personal property. That's the maximum shift allowed under the law. Uh, two A gives you more history of values, tax rates, bills. And three A compares us to other communities. It is for FY twenty-twenty-two, the fiscal year that entered in the summer, because other communities have not set their tax rate yet. You can see that we have, the only community with a lower average residential tax bill is Springfield. We are second lowest in the area, um, and that is the correct way to compare communities, because it takes into consideration not only the rate, but the average residential value. Okay. To proceed on your votes, we go to page three.
You want to open up the discussion first?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um, how I'm gonna do the discussion is I'm gonna do on the floor, and then I'm gonna turn around, look who's on Zoom, uh, because I can't go back and forth. So we're gonna start on the floor, asking questions. Just raise your hand, and you can ask your question. Consul, uh, Labrie.
Yes, uh, I had talked to um Assessor Anup uh today, Laura, and did we do a one se- not about this, but did we do a one seventy-five percent um shift for business last year, or was it lower?
No, last year we did a one seventy-five percent shift.
And my other question was, um, the three million we put in there, how much uh does it save a residential property owner uh per million, or if you, if you didn't break it down?
What I was able to do was do a um, I had noticed a comparison. Right now, at the maximum shift of one seventy-five percent, the tax rate would be fifteen dollars and fifteen cents. If three million was in our levy and you had not put that towards the taxes, it would be fifteen dollars and sixty-two cents per thousand instead of fifteen point one five. On an average property, difference in taxes would be a hundred and eighteen dollars. Um, the average property would have a tax of about thirty-eight hundred dollars on the fifteen point one five, and if you added in three million dollars, it would have been thirty-nine, thirty-seven.
Thank you. Those questions that I just had.
Basically, it's a three percent. Give a dollar amount right for the uh-
Three per, three-
Fifteen or seventeen cents per one.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I, I also like to note that Consul McCullough is on Zoom at this time. Uh, he called me three minutes ago. While they were speaking. Consul Lopez.
It would depend on what shift you chose. I wouldn't be able to give you that number today. That would be, I'm not sure how you would do that. You'd have to do comparison of the share that was switched from residential to commercial to determine what you did. And if you were comparing it to last year, last year's shift was one sev- um, was a hundred and seventy-five percent at the maximum. It would depend on what you voted on.
That's what she's asking. She said if it was one seventy-five tonight, she was asking the difference.
So I, I don't know how much of three million goes towards commercial and goes towards residential. It would, let me see, I, I would think it would be- No.
No.
No, no one has asked that question. I'm thinking it may be the number of, no, I don't wanna say, because I don't know.
Okay, um, let me see. Oh, Consul, um, Costello.
No.
No.
See, if you look at page three, the right side has the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two information. And it shows in the second box that the tax rate was sixteen ninety-nine per um for residents. The average value was two hundred fifteen thousand six hundred eighteen. The average bill was three thousand six hundred sixty-three. We haven't established a tax rate yet. I can tell you on the left side, our average value for a single-family home is two hundred fifty-two thousand forty-eight this year, which is an increase of thirty-six thousand four hundred and thirty dollars from last year. And basically, given the market, we're reflecting the market during calendar year twenty-twenty-one, a full year of numbers, and all values have increased on average by fifteen percent. Correct. Rate is thirty-seven point- Yes. Four and- Average residential tax. Well, that was the lowest, yes, and it was the lowest that the city council could vote on last year for a residential tax bill. That was the, that's, that is the maximum shift allowed under the law. I wanna make sure is-
President Laflamme, I can't hear her.
Fifteen percent on average.
Yeah.
Not Assessor McCarthy, but uh Councilwoman Pinaya Costello. I don't know if she's not speaking in the mic.
The other one?
Checking the mic now.
All right, she's got it right next to her. We apologize.
I'm talking right into it, and it does work.
Hold on a minute. Okay, anyone else? We'll go back to you if, um, anyone else, while he's fixing your mic, checking it. Why don't you finish if you want?
Okay, I, I, as I said before, I- Property values has increased tremendously. That's the largest jump you have seen for the uh increase in, in the-
Yeah, I would, I would say it has, then.
Is that also true for commercial?
Yes.
So all property values have increased in value at a rate.
Yes, the sale price for commercial properties have also been higher than we expected and anticipated.
Okay, we're gonna go to Zoom, uh, Consul Brooks.
So Assessor McCarthy, what do you, what do you ballpark, and I just wanna be sure I understood what you said earlier. You ballpark the average increase for a residential piece of property based on the evaluations to go about a hundred and eighteen dollars a year based on the relief provided for by the city?
Yes.
So-
That was if you voted to the maximum.
The maximum tax shift, yeah. Yep.
Yeah.
So while any increase is not palatable, a hundred and eighteen dollars over a twelve-month period, if you're paying in escrow, uh, and I'm not gonna try to do the math in my head, but it's probably roughly ten dollars a month?
Yeah.
Yep. I mean, I think in this climate, considering what you had just cited with the uh, the evaluations being roughly fifteen to twenty percent above what the probably market will bear in a year or two from now, and I would imagine that those valuations will come down at some point, because I don't think it's sustainable for the market to demand that level of expense for a residential home. This is gonna put us probably at the lowest increase in the Pioneer Valley, and I, I think it's a reflection of not only you, but your team's, the other two assessors' efforts to try to give us a true and honest assessment of what properties are worth. So it does, we will get critics about an increase, even though, albeit small, but I think it does reflect the city's efforts to not try to hurt the residential taxpayer and staying consistent with our historical shift to commercial taxes. So I thank you and your team for your efforts, and I, I hope that people realize that we're doing the best to provide property tax relief when, whenever possible.
Yes, there was a clear effort by the city council and the mayor to put that three million towards what was raised in taxes to help reduce the burden on our taxpayers. Excuse me, my voice cracked. Our taxpayers.
I absolutely agree with you.
You all set, Consul Brooks?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm ready, Frank.
Consul Tillotson.
Yeah, I make a mo- I make a motion out, we go to a hundred-
Jim, Jim, hold on, I thought you wanted to talk. I still have someone on the floor that wants-
I do, I wanna make a motion.
Well, before you most, make the motion, we wanna finish our conversations. You can make the motion one second, okay, Jim?
Okay.
There's still people on the floor that wanna talk. Hold, I thought you wanted to talk, that's why.
Well, they can talk on my motion.
Oh. Then, then make your motion, Jim, and then we'll-
Yeah, then if, and if they don't agree with me, they can come up with something else. I, I make a motion that we go at a hundred and seventy-five percent, point eight oh seven three, residential rate of fifteen fifteen, and minus one eighty-four, and um, a- a- and so that we can move forward. Now, now they can talk about it. If someone else doesn't wanna go one seventy-five, they can go whatever number they choose.
All right, Jim, thank you. Um, do we have to say the commercial on this right now, sort of, the uh, commercial rate? We, you didn't mention that, the shift. Jim, can you also include the shift for the in, uh, commercial, the thirty-two eighty-four?
Sure, thirty-two eighty-four, four point five eight, twenty-three thousand four ninety-eight, and seventy-one dollars.
On average.
On the average, okay.
On the average, right, okay, yeah, yeah.
Okay, uh, the, motion made in second that we go with the one seventy-five percent residential, the eight, zero point eight zero seven three, residential rate of fifteen point fifteen, one, one point eight four, the commercial rate of thirty-two point eight four, with the increase of four point, minus four point five six, the twenty-three thousand four hundred ninety-eight, and the seventy-one dollars. Okay. Roll call? Okay, you can talk now. Thank you. Don't worry. Thank you, I'm sorry. Yeah, absolutely. First, they muted me.
Yes, yes.
No, this can only be applied on the total levy. Or no.
So that's also important for the voters to understand that it's not that we didn't want to specifically, you know, impact more of the residences. We couldn't have, even if we wanted to, because we can't delineate exactly who it affects.
So, Consul Lopez, on page, uh, page three, the one seventy-five is what we both repeated just now, just so you know.
Oh, okay, thank you.
P- page three is, he's suggesting the one seven five percent is on page three, just so you can see it. Okay, is there any other questions? I, I have a question, if I could. On page, I think it was three, where you talked about the, the amount of, of uh, page seven, sorry. Uh, single families, you said how many were, are constructed this year?
Twenty-three new houses.
Twenty-three new ones, and you got that from the building department through permitting?
Yes.
Okay, so all-
And visits.
And visits. So all these things here are through either permitting, or whether it be um, a single family, uh, any, um, a garage, everything. That's what's been given to you by the building commission, right?
Yes, um, I didn't read all the details on this. This new growth includes all the building permits and renovations. So if they put a deck on the back of their house, that increases their value, and we put that two thousand dollar as an increase. But, you know, in new growth for a single-family home. So, you know, the eight million seven hundred twenty thousand dollars in new growth value is not only the twenty-three new houses. Majority of it is.
Right, it's the other stuff that-
But there's a lot of um additions and decks and smaller things that are going on in the city.
Right, so that's why it's important to be pulling permits, so we can get the value out of them. Thank you. Okay, um, we have a motion on the floor. Right now, we can take the motion for the, are you all set? Nothing else? No other questions? Nobody on Zoom for any questions?
If I may.
Oh, go ahead.
It's a vote on the residential factor.
Yes, the one seven five.
Eight point eight zero seven three.
Seven three, yes.
That's the official vote.
That is the vote for tonight. So again, as you just mentioned, Laura, on page three, we are going with the resident factor of zero point eight zero seven three as a vote tonight. Are we all set? Roll call, please.
President Laflamme.
Yes.
Tillotson.
Yes.
Zgarowski.
Yes.
McCullough.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Lopez.
Yes.
Valkir.
Yes.
Krampitz. Bree.
Yes.
Pinaya Costello.
Yes.
Ten yes.
Ten yes, and the motion passes. Now we'll do the e- exceptions to be voted on by the city council. Being first, the residential, you wanna explain it, please, real quick?
Okay, uh, it would-
What the vote is.
Shift the, it would give a discount to people who are homeowners and live in their property in the residence. It's usually used when there are, um, a Cape Cod, when there are a lot of homes that are owned by people outside of the community. It's not their primary residence. The historical vote has been a no.
Thank you. Okay, um, I need a motion? By somebody?
Motion to, motion to deny.
Oh, you got a question? Hold on. Okay, the motion made in second that this uh residential uh exception be denied this evening. On the motion.
Oh, I, I understand why at the Cape it would be, would we not also?
You would putting, I, I'm sorry, you would be putting a huge burden on a small amount of property. Um, we would talk, let me look at this for a minute. You would have approximately maybe eight hundred getting an additional uh shift of taxes, let's see. Whatever you discount, for example, we have eleven thousand single-family homes, condos. We bring it up to thirteen thousand fourteen, so maybe fifteen thousand properties would be reduced by five percent. That five percent would have to go on to the thousand-dollar, the thousand that are owned by outside people. It still needs to be raised in the residential class. It can't be shifted to the commercial class.
That five percent, like-
I, I just picked it randomly. It could be anything from one to twenty percent.
I mean, we're talking, so if there's about fifteen thousand, a thousand of those are properties that are not lived in by the homeowner themselves. We're talking about like seven percent folks who make up the difference. I don't know how I feel about, not even, yeah, about seven percent-ish, seven to ten. But maybe there should be something, though, like there should be some kind of discount to, well, I don't, I don't say five percent, 'cause that would increase it enough, but like maybe one or two percent, where like if you're living in your home and you're a resident of the city and you are um, you're here, you're invested here, that's a very different situation than someone who is just a landlord here, and you are also getting the same exact benefits from our tax levy and our um, youth tax dollars for that. So like, I, I think there, it makes sense for there to be something. Maybe not as big as there would be at the Cape, obviously, but something.
Let me think about an illustration. So you're saying-
Like, let's put dollar amounts.
Jane Smith lives in a home and, I don't know- Jane Smith lives in a home and, I don't know, nickname Fowler owns a three-family home. And the bill's mailed to the three-family home, but does he live there? How would I determine if he lives there? I would need to check.
Well, residents.
The, the street list to determine if he actually lives there and, um, I, I, I just.
Do you not already have a listing of like, we do?
We, we don't know, we, we only have the mailing address. It doesn't mean that someone lives there if the mailing address is there. Um, you can make that assumption, but I think someone could challenge that assumption.
But they would just have to like, under the pains and perjury of the law, say that, yes, they live there. And if they lie, well, I mean, that's different, but I think there should be something that offsets. It's, it's very different to put a burden on a, a family that lives in the city that pays for taxes than to be taxed at the same exact rate as someone who owns ten buildings. Like, that is very different.
To determine domiciles of those people. So, so for example, actually, my mom is domiciled here and say her value is two hundred and fifty thousand on her house. Her neighbor, the house is valued at two hundred and forty, forty thousand, that's a little smaller, but say vote in Florida. I just happen to know that. I don't know that from the records that we have. So that would not be their domicile. So how do I know who, just looking at single-family homes, how do I know who's domiciled in Chicabe versus domiciled elsewhere? I, I would have to cross-reference with the voter list or the street list. Okay, okay. It, 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 it would be a, we could do that, but it's a significant project that's not going to happen within, I don't know how long it would take. I don't, I honestly don't know how long it would take. Probably a couple of weeks or something.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. He's, you're next. I'm waiting for her to say, she's all set at the moment.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I don't mind it taking a, a couple of weeks. I don't mind us having to wait for it. Um, I do think that it makes a difference for us to, if it's a small, a small decrease on the bill of a home, of, of home of a family that lives here in the city, that means a smaller increase on the other side to investor. I, I think it's important for us to support the families that live in the city. And I don't want to over, over, overburden them, so I wouldn't vote for like a twenty percent, like that's, uh, that would be a little outrageous in terms of dollar amounts. But if us put in three million dollars into the levy, offset a little over a hundred dollars, and that was worth it to us, we are now also taking off maybe ten, twenty more dollars off of a family's bill that lives here. I mean, that's money that could go towards like their groceries, whereas if, if a three-family home owned by an investor that doesn't live here, I mean, they have three rents that they're getting from that home. And they're getting more than what the mortgage of the home is, more than what the taxes is. And for me, I, I would rather protect the pocket of the family that's local, that is most impacted by this.
Councilor LeBrie?
Yeah, through the chair, uh, to, uh, Councilor, uh, Lopez, um, there's a lot of properties also out there that are put into trusts and life estates. And they'd have to go through those and those people would be penalized. So in people's older years, when they, um, put these, uh, properties into trust, they would get penalized also. So, um, you know, you might want to, you know, consider that. And there, there are a lot of them because I work in an office that, that's what we do estate planning and, uh, uh, more and more people are putting their properties into trust these days.
Mm-hmm.
Information, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Costello?
I just want to thank, um, Councilor Lopez. This particular.
I love that thing.
Reason this isn't working.
I don't know.
It won't reach. You're gonna pull it?
Yeah, I, I just want to, um, I want to thank Councilor Lopez for bringing up this particular.
I don't know, I think the figures are all screwed up. I'm seeing it anyway.
Does everybody hear me now?
Testing, mic one, two, testing.
All right, so I just want to thank Councilor Lopez for bringing up this, uh, this different idea in regards to the tax assessment between the residents and the investors. I think that's, uh, something that we should be looking at and, um, makes sense because if we can save money for the residents, that's, um, a noble idea since that's been something the city council historically has been trying to do forever. So thank you, Councilor Lopez, for, uh, rethinking, um, how we handle the difference between the residents and the investors. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to talk?
We have a question about process.
Go ahead, Councilor Tillotan.
We've voted no on these issues because if you shift it somewhere else, then the rest of us have to pay for it. It's no, there's no free lunch here. It's not like, well, we're gonna, we're gonna change these things around and then someone else is gonna have to pay for it. So, or, or the tax rates are ha, are gonna go, have to go up in order to accommodate these no's. And that's why we stayed away from them. There weren't enough people, there are a lot of people involved with it. And by the time, if we did went, went through with it, it would, we would wind up having to, uh, make everyone else's bill higher in order to make up for the money that was being used in these, in these street programs. So we, we voted no historically, and that's the reason why. You're just shifting money from one place to another. You may help someone else out, but you raise the fight, you raise your, the taxes on everyone else to make up the difference.
Thank you.
I don't, I like to, that's why it stayed no for so many years.
Thank you. Okay, uh, last round, Councilor Lopez.
Uh, so to be clear, I understand that this kind of exemption would, or this kind of, um, tax shift would increase tax dollars for another pool. We discussed that at length. We discussed about how there was about a thousand properties who would fall under that. Um, and I'm not assuming that there's free lunch money for anyone here. I understand that there's a tax shift. But I'm clearly trying to ensure that we do what's best for the residents and that we are watching out for the pockets of the small guy here, which is, you know, the homeowners who live in the city and, you know, have uh, family expenses. And it's very different. There's a big difference between a residential homeowner and an investor. So I'm not, I, I understand very clearly that the shift needs someone else to pay for it. But if the shift is not a, a, a super huge amount, it's not a undue burden on the investor, I would rather the investor have to pay a little bit more than the homeowner who actually lives in all this. Also, if you live in the home and you're a three-family home, it does, you're not affected because you are living in the home. This is specifically for the homes that are not lived in by the owner. Um, so I, I understand that historically, we may have voted no. Perhaps we hadn't thought about it this way historically. And that's okay. Part of, uh, having new faces and new voices on the council and new ideas and it, it's thinking about things in new ways and, and looking at what new possibilities are. So I, my question on process is, do we have to vote on this exemption tonight? Or can we table this and give them some time to come up with numbers?
What's the deadline for you to get it? I know there's a time period.
Well, it will change the current timeline for sending out tax bills.
Right.
So we would need to gather this information in process and you would need to meet again to vote on it. So if it's two weeks from now, then your tax bills are going out two weeks later, three weeks later, depending.
This, again, this is the last time. Gary, your second time.
Yeah, just want to bring up too that, uh, if it's passed on to the investors, uh, people's rents are gonna go up, uh, lower income rents are gonna go up, uh, you know, it just, it, it, it snowballs. So, um, I know they're investors, but they have to get their money. And, uh, they're gonna pass it on to the, uh, people that live in those apartments or wherever.
All right, thank you. I'm gonna, I'm gonna just say a couple of words if I can. Um, I was gonna just, uh, ducktail off of Councilor LeBrie because, um, one thing I do, I do own some apartments. And one thing I've always tell my tenants to get out and vote because their rent is, is partially due to what decisions are made by the city council. Uh, whether it's taxes, water bills, or whatever is done in the city. So, uh, as Gary just mentioned, that's part of it. And I get where, yes, they're, they make more money, but they also have to take that burden of the tax and figure out where to adjust it. And I get where, so tonight, I personally am gonna vote no on it, but I think your idea is something good that we work on because there's, there's a lot of questions, whether it be trust or whatever, to, uh, get and bring up for next year's tax base and get the legitimate, uh, information to all of us so that we can digest the good, good idea that you have. But it's just, uh, even three weeks, I don't think they're gonna get those answers to us. Uh, whether it's, you know, legalities too with the state you're gonna have to look into. And I'm not sure if any, any other city already does this. And maybe that's possible they do.
We would have had information if we knew ahead of time that this was gonna be a question. I would have been able to tell you which communities do it at least.
Yeah.
And I would have started to do an analysis of what properties are owned by, obviously owned by people. Which ones are questionable and which ones may not be owned, owner occupied.
All right, thank you. Councilor Lopez, do you want to, did you want to make a motion about holding, delaying it? You have to make a motion because if not, we will take the vote.
Yeah, I think delaying is, is not a bad idea. I mean, it, it might hold the bill up for a couple of weeks. But like at the core, I think people would prefer for the bill to be held up for a couple of weeks if that means that there's a potential for us to have a decrease, even if it's a couple of dollars for the residential homes. Um, and I, I don't think the increase is gonna be so big on investors that it means that rent has to be like brought up by a hundred dollars. Like, that's not, it's not, it's gonna be minute to the investors in comparison to the residential homes. So I would love to have some information about whether other cities are doing it around us, what the impact would actually be um, on residential homes versus investor bills and have all the facts in front of us before we, we vote on a no exemption. So I would like to make a motion to table this discussion. I don't know how much time they would like. I'm happy to discuss that and make the motion accordingly to how much time they would need.
Okay. Let, let's take a motion to see if we want to delay it approximately. Okay, are gonna make a, you may make a motion. Okay, I'm gonna make a motion that we postpone to the call of the chair. The accept, the exception vote, oh, it would be all of it because all has to be done at the same time. Okay, regarding the tax, um, um, notification. Okay, roll call.
And, um, Del Maria's motion to postpone to the call of the chair, right?
Correct.
That's your motion. President Laflamme?
No.
Tillotan?
No.
Zegarowski?
No.
McAuliffe?
No.
Brooks?
No.
Lopez?
Yes.
Valkir?
No.
Crampits?
Yes.
Bree?
No.
Vinnie Acostello?
Yes.
Seven oh three yes.
Motion's defeated.
Motion's defeated.
Now we'll go on to the exception for the residential vote.
So, also, Councilor Tillotan's motion was to deny.
Correct.
So on the motion, on the motion to deny. President Laflamme?
Yes.
Um, Tillotan?
Yes.
Zegarowski?
Yes.
McAuliffe?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Lopez?
No.
Valkir?
Yes.
Crampits?
Yes.
Bree?
Yes.
Vinnie Acostello?
No.
Yes and no.
And the motion passes. Now we're gonna be voting on the open space, uh, uh, except, uh, is, exceptions, uh, con, um, Sasha Kujubu?
Yes. Um, there is an exemption that's allowed for open space, but the city of Chicabe does not have any property that is classified as open space. So obviously, the historic vote has been no since there's nothing to address.
Okay, I need a motion?
Motion to defeat.
Motion made by Councilor Crampits to defeat the open space, um, open space. Any comments on this or questions? On Zoom, any questions? Seeing none, roll call.
President Laflamme?
No.
Tillotan?
No.
Zegarowski? Oh, wait a minute, we're saying no.
I thought it was a motion to defeat.
Motion to defeat.
I'm sorry, I'm reading that.
So, on the motion to defeat, President Laflamme?
Yes.
Tillotan?
Yes.
Zegarowski?
Yes.
McAuliffe?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Valkir?
Yes.
Crampits?
Yes.
Bree?
Yes.
Vinnie Acostello?
Yes.
Ten yes.
And the motion passes.
Small commercial.
Now, now we'll go on exceptions for the small commercial.
In this exemption, um, commercial businesses that have less than ten employees would receive a discount up to ten percent. And the amount of money that their taxes are lowered would be shifted to the other commercial and industrial properties.
Thank you. Any questions? No questions, or take a motion?
I, I do have a question, I'm sorry. So we are voting not to shift or we are voting to shift?
Not, not to do the exemption, not to adopt the exemption. The exemption would provide, uh, reduction, the reduction is the exemption for certain, certain businesses. And it would increase the tax of other businesses because you have to raise X amount of dollars from commercial property.
What businesses would qualify under the exemption? What small businesses?
They would have less than ten employees and a valuation of less than one million dollars. I would have to find the list from the Department of Employment and Training.
And then why have we said no to this? Why would we not want to shift the burden to the larger businesses?
To treat all, I believe, to treat all commercial property owners the same.
Okay, so on, on this motion, my commentary would be all commercial owners are not the same. Um, small businesses, especially, we witnessed this during COVID, the hit that small businesses took. Why would we not want to shift the burden to the bigger businesses when the small businesses are impacted much more by the cost of taxes than a large business? What?
Laurie, can you explain that?
I don't.
A lot, a lot of small businesses, aren't we?
Right, so why would we not want to?
No, yeah, but they have to be.
No, 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 they have to be less than a million dollars. Um, it, I, I believe it's just been the policy of the city to not shift the burden within a class of property. We've shifted it from residential to commercial, having commercial property owners pay more, a higher tax rate. But we had not shifted within one class from certain residents to other, um, other residential property paying more money and from certain commercial properties paying less and other commercial properties paying more.
Yeah, I, I, and now that I understand that, because I wanted to make sure I understood what was happening here. I, it's surprising to me that we've never shifted this so that small businesses get a break to a certain extent. Why would we not sh, shift? It's literally only ten percent. Why would we not shift by ten percent or up to ten percent? What a large business has to pay in comparison to a small business. We as a city, like everyone, all of us, from the mayor to the council, we all talk all the time about how much we want to support the small business, how much we want to support the small guy who's trying to start something new here in the city. And we have the opportunity to give them a break by shifting some of the, some of the commercial tax responsibility to the larger businesses that are obviously making more than, uh, a million, have a valuation of more than a million dollars, have more than ten employees. I mean, why would we not want to shift this? I don't understand why we wouldn't.
Okay. That's everybody, all the councils will have to think about it when they vote. Councilor Costello?
But to, to follow up on Councilor Lopez's, um, good point. Small businesses have been really impacted more than large businesses in most cases since the COVID started in March of two thousand and twenty. And because of COVID, there's a, there's a, a feeling that we should support. And because of COVID, there's a, there's a, a feeling that we should support small business because they've had to close their doors. They can't get help, they can't be overtaxed. There are a lot of issues that small businesses have that large businesses don't have. Many large businesses did close during COVID, but many of them have become successful. Even now, with the increase of grocery items, you see that the large business in regards to certain areas have not been hurt as hard as small business. So I think this is a good time that Counselor Lopez is bringing this up to rethink our classifications and exemptions and how we handle small business, especially in this era of COVID. Thank you.
Thank you. Consul Labrie.
You know, I don't want to be, you know, the naysayer here, but, you know, I don't know how much work it would be to take all of the uh tax bills or all, you know, the, contact the Department of Employment and Training uh to get all of the buildings and businesses that are less than, you know, a million dollars and have less than ten employees. Um, you know, I don't think it's realistic for this year. It's not like I don't like the idea. Uh I think the idea has some merit, but I don't think it's at all, and it, maybe correct me if I'm wrong, the assessors, for them to go through all of the records and realistically come up with uh an accurate account. Uh it's just my opinion on that.
Thank you. Any other counselor on the floor? Any counselors on Zoom would like to talk? Okay, I'm gonna say, uh, hold on Jim, please. I'm gonna again, um, agree with Consul Labrie. Um I think it, this thing has merit what uh uh Consul Lopez brought up. I think it's a good idea. Um but I think the process is gonna take much longer than we think it will take to verify everything. Um so I, I, and as you mentioned, it's not a big burden. Um but I, I, I do want to help small businesses. I'm one to help small businesses, but I think we need to do it right too. And I think this is something that she brought up that we, we'll, we'll be looking at to get all that information, she said, for our, for our next classification if we're here. Thank you. One more last time, go ahead.
Um and so I understand Counselor Labrie, and this is, with, with all due respect to everyone who works for the city. Um I appreciate everything that everyone who works for the city does, but I just do not think that the excuse of this might be too much work is a good enough excuse, or this might take too long, is a good enough excuse to not really look at this issue and to just vote on it for the sake of this might be too much work. There's a way to provide support to that office if we needed to. Maybe give them some interim support so that they could, you know, allocate more resources to helping figure this out if they need more help right now. But the, the reality is, uh as much as I appreciate everything that everyone does, we can't just like make decisions based on this might be too much work. Um and I understand that like some folks might disagree with that and your votes will reflect how you really feel about um whether you want to wait or not, and that's fine. I respect that. But I, I will not make a vote simply on the fact that this might be too much work.
Okay, uh again.
If I may, we did not say any of this would be too much work.
No, we, no we did not.
You did not. Counselor Labrie stated that this might be too much work, and that is what I am responding to.
Okay, yeah. I'm gonna go around one more time. We have another meeting starting in five minutes. I don't want to uh prolong that meeting. We have a zoning meeting for the folks in the back, but this is just as important. If we will, we'll take a break uh and uh come back to the zoning. Uh, the final time, Consul Labrie.
Yeah, I, you know, I, I didn't want to imply that it's too much work. It is too much work to be uh reasonably expected of this department to get tax bills out at a, on time. Uh I don't want to see tax bills being out in January or February. Uh I'd said again, I, I could see the merit in this. I like it. But I don't think we can postpone it that long. And correct me if I'm wrong, assessors, can you get, could you get this out in three, four weeks? Uh with what, you, you know, even if we allocated staff, how would they be trained, you know? Uh I just don't think it's plausible. Um that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Okay, uh.
You'd have to bring in other departments like community development, the planning department. More complex than something that would take a couple of weeks. What we would be doing is would be postponing the tax bills so that people might get their tax bill by Christmas.
Maybe.
And we've tried to avoid that.
Yes. Can you ta- talk this, towards this way for people that are on Zoom, can hear you too, please? And see, you don't need to repeat it this time, but when you do, go through the chair this way so they can see you too. Okay, this is the, again, the final time. Consul uh Valkir.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Now, this is a very interesting concept. So telling your comment, um I, I am concerned with in terms of uh deadlines because I think this also has to be approved by the Department of Revenue as well. And also take into consideration when the bills have to go out and then also working with input from the Treasurer's Department as well. So there's, this can be, this can be a very complex issue in terms of timeliness and when um cash is supposed to be coming back to the city. So that, that's, that's another thing, the, the deadlines. Uh this could be something that we could think about for next year, but in terms of timeliness, we have to bring other departments into this to make sure that everything is done properly.
Thank you. Anyone, I seen a couple of hands. Final time, Mrs. Costello.
Thank you, President uh Laflamme. I think the idea has a lot of merit. I'm backing this idea and sooner than later is better. Because right now, we live in a very difficult economic time. Inflation is at a forty plus year high. So if we can help the little guy, that's a big plus for the city. So I would prefer to implement this particular idea fast as we can. Delaying it for a year costs the little guy money. Thank you.
Anyone else on the floors? Anyone on Zoom? Okay, I need a motion. I didn't get a motion on this one. Mo, okay, first we're gonna do a motion to postpone the small commercial, oh no, actually the tax rate uh to the call of the chair. Roll call, please.
This is the small commercial exemption, right?
Yeah, but it, yes.
Okay, motion, on the motion to postpone, President Laflamme.
No.
Tilton.
No.
Sigurowski.
No.
McAuliffe.
No.
Brooks.
Yes.
Lopez.
Yes.
Valkir.
No.
Krampitsch.
No.
Labrie.
No.
Penny Castello.
Yes.
Seven no, three yes.
The motion's defeated.
Can I make a?
Now the. Can you repeat that, please?
Can I make a motion to approve the exemption, Mrs. Counselor McAuliffe?
Oh, sorry. Motion made in second, that we approve the small commercial exception. Roll call, please. I mean, deny. No.
No, motion is to approve.
Yeah.
What rate, Counselor McAuliffe?
There's no rate. Oh, yeah. So a no, a no vote will no vote will approve it, right?
Beat it.
Beat it.
Right.
I'd like to make a motion to approve an exemption for small businesses.
Okay. Excuse me. Hold on.
So if I may, is the motion to approve the small commercial exemption at ten percent? Is that the motion?
Yes, can we do that?
That is the motion.
Can take a vote on that?
Yeah.
I don't know what the effect is gonna be. I can't tell you the numbers because I don't have numbers in front of me. I don't know who's affected by what. I mean, you can take that vote, I just don't know the, the ramification.
Okay, so let's clarify the, the vote. City clerk, can you clarify what you're gonna do for?
Counselor McAuliffe made a motion to approve the small commercial exemption. So that would be the motion you're gonna vote on. And did he speci- did you specify a percentage, ten percent?
Yes.
Ten percent.
Joel, you said ten percent, right?
Okay, so Counselor McAuliffe's motion is to approve the small commercial exemption at ten percent, which you need to second.
Motion made in second that we approve the uh small commercial at ten percent.
Okay, so a yes vote would approve it, a no vote will deny the historical, will deny it.
Comment on the motion.
Go ahead, Consul Lopez.
Um so obviously, my vote, my motion to postpone was so that we could get more data. I am completely for us approving an exemption. Um given the votes on the floor and the talk on the floor, I, I don't think a motion to approve is gonna pass tonight without data. Um so I, I, as much as I would support up to ten percent, I would need data. I can't just like say yes to ten percent without knowing the impact that that might have on the businesses. Um because ten percent might be too much, or ten percent might just be just enough. So as much as I would love to support that, uh because I do want to support the little guy, I can't support that blindly. Um which is why I wanted to postpone, which is surprising to me that Counselor McAuliffe is now giving us a motion to approve, but didn't support the motion to postpone, which would have given us time to gather data and to have that in front of us before we made a decision. So I, I, I want to support the little guy, but I can't make decisions without the data in front of me because that would be, I feel negligence and irresponsibility on my own end because I don't know how this impacts the businesses.
Okay, thank you. Roll call on the uh Consul McAuliffe.
Sure. President Laflamme.
No.
Tilton.
No.
Sigurowski.
No.
McAuliffe.
No.
Brooks.
Yes.
Lopez.
No.
Valkir.
No.
Krampitsch.
No.
Bree.
No.
Penny Castello.
No.
Nine no, one yes.
And the motion passes.
No, it does not pass.
Oh, I'm sorry, motion's defeated, thank you. Okay, now we're gonna vote on the small commercial.
We just did that, we're gonna need a motion to adjourn.
Oh, so we didn't do it ten percent? We need a mo, we need a motion to, we, we need a motion to do, do this, no?
That was the vote.
That was the vote, okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure.
Wait, that, that was the overall vote at that point?
Yes.
So then, I'm sorry, can I change my, can we do a re-roll call? Because I would like to change my vote then. Motion to reconsider, please.
Roll call.
Doesn't the motion to reconsider have to come from somebody on the no side?
Yeah, we've already got a motion on, we've already got a.
I was on the no side.
Thank you for clarification.
Yeah, I was on the winning side.
She was. Yeah, she voted no. Okay, roll call, please.
Counselor Laflamme, if I may, before we, we go into the roll call vote, we're now at six thirty-six and there is an ordinance committee meeting that was publicly posted at six thirty. We should adjourn this meeting and let them at least have a roll call to postpone the start of that meeting to the call of the chair and then reconvene our meeting to be consistent with open meeting laws. Um I only pointed out.
Okay, um I, I thank you, but um I think this last vote will take a half a minute, in a, in the adjournment will take a half a minute to do it and that the folks in the back, uh I think will be all set with that. It'll only take us a minute to do it.
Okay.
Because it'll take more time to go back and forth. But thank you, Consul Brooks.
On the motion to reconsider the question.
Now, yes vote will be.
Will put the vote back on the floor. So on the motion to reconsider the last vote, President Laflamme.
Yes.
The motion, the motion is motion to approve.
No, the motion is to reconsider.
We made a motion to have, to reconsider the last vote.
Okay, okay, we're going to reconsider.
So we're backing on your motion to reconsider.
Yes, back your motion.
Okay, I understand.
Yes.
On the motion to reconsider the last vote, President Laflamme.
Yes.
Tilton.
No.
Sigurowski.
No.
McAuliffe.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Lopez.
Yes.
Valkir.
No.
Krampitsch.
Yes.
Bree.
No.
Penny Castello.
Yes.
Six yes or no?
And the motion passes. Okay, we're gonna do a re, a re-roll call on the, I said the motion.
Dinner passes, no, we had a majority vote.
No.
We're six to four, six, six said reconsider it.
Okay, so, so now we're gonna revote on the small commercial.
Questions back on the floor. We don't need another motion, right? The question's back on the floor, okay.
Right.
So the question is back on the floor for the small commercial exemption.
And what, what, what?
And the motion was made by Counselor McAuliffe to approve that and set the rate at a ten percent rate, so. On Counselor McAuliffe's motion, President Laflamme.
No.
Tilton.
No.
Sigurowski.
No.
McAuliffe.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Lopez. Valkir.
No.
Krampitsch.
No.
Labrie.
No.
Penny Castello.
Yes.
Three yes.
I have to put on the record.
Six no, one abstention.
I, I'm going to. I want to put on the record, my reason for abstention was that I wanted it to be postponed so that we could get information regarding the rate. I, I could not support a yes vote without information because I felt that that would have been negligence on my own end. However, I would have preferred to give the exemption to the small businesses.
Thank you.
That's all we have.
Okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Uh, roll call, please.
President Laflamme.
Yes.
Tilton.
Yes.
Sigurowski.
Yes.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yep.
Lopez.
Yes.
Valkir.
Yes.
Krampitsch.
Yes.
Labrie.
Yes.
Penny Castello.
Yes.
Ten yes.
And I, I want to thank the residents for the zoning committee meetings for being patient with us for a few minutes to finish this meeting. Thank you.